Appreciate folks being with us today. Hope everybody enjoyed the holiday weekend and got the chance to enjoy some time off with, hopefully, family and friends. Quite some time ago, I'm probably going to get it wrong now, but I feel like maybe January of 22, somewhere in that range, we had a summit of sorts on housing, affordable housing, homelessness, and what some of the options, choices were. I think, at least for me, back then, I was more in the problem side of the equation, more so than the solution side. I think what we looked at back then was a future where the federal government's spending of trillions of dollars that they didn't have would probably stop at some point. Some call that the benefits cliff or different things that are happening in the marketplace. But what we saw was a potentially exponential increase in the problem of homelessness or affordable housing in our community. And we were wanting solutions that we could invest in that try to ameliorate some of the harm that we forecasted. But in any event, we are thrilled to have with us today some folks who are going to give us an update on some of the work that's been done and some of the thought that's been put into, I'm hoping, the solution side of the problem. In any event, welcome.
How are you today? Very good, thank you.
Good.
Thanks for having us. I'm Linda Burkey-Dussar. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Lancaster.
And I'm Randall Hough.
And we are the co-chairs for the Fairfield County Housing Coalition. So this is a group that's been meeting for many years now, and we have a very robust group, about 50 people attend every month. We're getting to the point where we are needing extra chairs. So that's very exciting that people are engaged and part of the conversation. And these are people who work for nonprofits, social service agencies, churches, volunteers for churches from all over the county who support affordable housing in some way across the county. So county commissioners allocated some funding for a housing strategic plan for affordable housing. We worked with consultants, the REMA Consulting Firm, and they led us in some focus groups. We had residents, people who've lived experience of homelessness, in our focus groups and came up with a pretty high-level strategic plan with six goals. And so from that, we've taken that on as a housing coalition to really dig into that, into those goals, into those strategies. So we've set up committees, and so we have committee chairs and everyone, people in the members of the housing coalition sit on those committees. And so we're moving that forward. And then the housing coalition makes for a good structure for that. So when we meet monthly, we have that on the agenda for committee updates. And so our first goal is to have stable and affordable housing, something that you spoke about just in terms of the pandemic. We are seeing a lot of people being evicted. There were rental supports, housing supports available that are no longer available. We see a lot of homes and apartments that the rents just went up. The property owners just raised the rents because they could, and no improvements were made. And so you had a family who maybe was paying $700 a month after the pandemic with no improvements made, the rent went up to $1,200. And so the family doesn't have $500. Their wages didn't go up $500 a month, so they're having to find another place to live. We also know about the high demand for housing has just squeezed people out. So we have rental complexes that maybe in the past, they would, they had more flexible criteria for renters. And now their criteria is very high because they are zero vacancy, they have very low vacancy. So we're just finding it very hard, these social service agencies are finding it very hard to find places for people to live. But within this first goal, so Randall is our chair for this committee, and we, our first strategy is to assess the feasibility of conducting a comprehensive housing market study. And so that is something that we're looking forward to. So now that the county has, you're wrapping up the comprehensive plan and the land use plan, so the next step is to do a comprehensive housing market study for the whole county, for all levels of housing. And we're really looking forward to that. We, our committees are doing a lot of work in terms of the inventory of affordable housing, and we want to feed that data to the folks that are going to do that housing market study. And so we really want to participate in that, in that study, not just turn it over to consultants and say, okay, whatever, whatever data you want to find, but to be, to be helping with that effort and be a part of that effort. And so that once we have that housing market study, then we can take that affordable housing piece and use that for recommendations. The coalition can make recommendations for funding, recommendations for projects, and to be able to identify the gaps in housing and make recommendations to fill those gaps. The second goal is around supportive housing. So folks with mental illness, people with substance use disorder, people with disabilities all need some sort of supportive services with housing, and, or some of them do. And so identifying those target populations, what supportive services do they need, and the number of units that are needed for each population. So we already have some housing that is, has services included, but how many more units do we need? Our goal three is around supportive, supportive services outside of housing. So we have, we have the housing units, and then we have housing units that need, where people need support included with their housing, and then we need supportive services outside of that for everyone, right? And we really test 2-1-1. So if you're familiar with our local information referral services, 2-1-1, they do a fantastic job. And a lot of people, and we refer people to them, if you need something, if you need housing, including any other services that you need, we point people to 2-1-1. And they take a lot of calls and they make a lot of referrals. And so with this goal, we're really asking them to take more of a role in that, to where they would actually be sitting down with people and helping them make a plan for housing instead of just giving a referral. They aren't case managers, and so if they take on that role, that will require some funding and training and things like that. But we're really talking about what would that look like, so that we aren't just referring people somewhere, they're making a phone call, they're getting a referral to a list or to a landlord, but they're actually getting that support that they need to find the housing that they need and be housed. Our number four goal is around community engagement. So engaging our stakeholders in developing solutions around the continuum of housing and creating a communication plan that will educate the community and reduce stigma. So we, we know that for a lot of people, there is a stigma around section, section eight housing, there is a stigma around people who appear to be homeless, they may or may not be homeless, and a stigma around people with justice involvement in their background. And a lot of those tend to be barriers to people being housed. And so we want to work on a communication plan within the community. And number five is reducing barriers. So this one, we're really talking about, it's advocating for a new revised housing policy and partnerships that eliminate barriers. And this group has really turned into the group that's focusing on, oh yeah, this is number five. Right, collaborating to reduce the impact of evictions and other offenses on potential tenants' records as a barrier to obtaining safe housing. So where can we, what policies are in place that are really creating barriers for people that, that could be, the barrier, the policies could be changed and still have a good positive result for the community and for, and for people? And then number six is around homeless. So this goal is specifically targeted to conversation around people living outside, people who are homeless. And Lutheran Social Services has recently hired an outreach specialist, and this was something that came out of the housing coalition. We had put together a subcommittee on homelessness in 2020 to really have the conversation and take a look at what was, what's happening and what services do people need. And we realized we have a lot of services, we are a very service-rich community. What we, what the, the gap was that people are living outside, they weren't coming in for the next step, they weren't doing the follow-up that needed, that was needed for the next step. So we realized we really need to go out to them, we need to have someone going out to them on a consistent basis. Now, the city's code enforcement team is going out and cleaning up and not having people camping out, but they are not there to provide services. And they say, oh, well, call 2-1-1 and call these organizations. Well, now we have an outreach specialist hired by Lutheran Social Services, and the plan is to have an outreach team. So to have people with lived experience of homelessness and social workers as a team going out and talking with people and just creating those relationships. And that's going really well so far. And so we're really, we're really glad to have, Tim Hubbard is our outreach specialist, we're really glad to have him and the team that he's building Lutheran Social Services for making that a part of their program and Adam H. for funding it. So.
Just add a couple of things. One, the strategic plan process, I think that the investment that the county commissioners made, it not only provided a good planning document and a good planning structure, but it's also given structure to the housing coalition, you know, where we've organized into these groups, and we call it us around that, we can report out. So it's provided some structure, I think, that we really didn't have before. We were more kind of a sharing and an update group. Now I feel like we have, you know, a planning group that actually has some mission and some, some goals moving forward. So I think that was one of the good things that came out of that, and it continues on. The other thing I wanted to just kind of dovetail on what Linda was talking about with COVID relief money that is coming to an end and those supports, just to kind of put it out there since we're talking on the subject, is that, you know, our agency has administered since the beginning of COVID, since 2020, $10 million in the community for rent, utilities, mortgage, and utilities for homeowners. And those ones are, they're gone now. And so we're kind of just spinning, you know, spinning down what little we have left for folks that are in the pipeline, but, you know, we're on a cusp of something here, I think, that with the kind of supports that were there, that that's ending. And then the third thing I would mention too is that, Linda talked about Tim with LSS doing street outreach, which is awesome, it's great, it didn't come out of our housing coalition. One thing I think is going to be helpful too is that HUD does require a point in time count every January, and I think this coming year, in January, having Tim and having a team, we're going, we're going to have a much better count, an accurate count and a more meaningful count, because we'll have people to build relationships with the folks that are unsheltered, and it'll give us a lot more data points for, for the city and for the county.
I want to add that with Adam H. and Lutheran Social Services building their 24-unit, supportive housing center on Venture Place that the county has supported, that is, that will really go a long way to getting people housed. And with Tim working with people who are homeless and that, you know, those, those units being built, that, that's the idea, right? Is that Tim is working with people, when they're ready to be housed, we have a place for them to live.
Thank you for the work that you're doing. Thoughts that come to mind? On the one hand, it probably, we did a little bit of cart before the horse in terms of like, well, we're going to make some investments, kind of shooting from the hip before the results of this analysis come in, because that was kind of the calendar from an ARP funding standpoint. If we didn't move, for example, on the LSS-Adam partnership, when we did, the ability to encumber by December 31st of 2024 was going to be next to impossible. They're going to struggle to even do that, moving as quickly as we did. They'll get there, but it's, it's going to be a scary landing there. So I just want you to know that we know that we kind of got the cart before the horse, but we felt like we were kind of pushed in that direction to move on that. The other thing I just want to mention, I did come to one of the housing coalition meetings, at least one, as I recall, there was, there was a statement made in one of those meetings, and I'm not denigrating the statement or the person who made it, it wasn't anybody here, but it was a veiled criticism of support for Habitat for Humanity because they only generate a house or two a year, and that doesn't move the needle. And I just remember being, you know, irritated by that suggestion because the speaker wasn't generating a house or two a year. And I think, you know, if you're, if you, in order to have standing, right, to criticize that entity that's only, right, you should be doing more than that before you lean into that criticism. And then the last thought I just want to share before I open it up to my colleagues for questions is, I know the language choices are important in our discourse, we can call it affordable housing or workforce housing or, you know, whatever. We understand two things crystal clear. If we do something about homelessness or idiots, and if we don't, for idiots, that's the politics of homelessness. No matter what you do, you shouldn't be doing it, and if you do, you shouldn't be doing that either. There's no good political approach to homelessness. I think the commission is shedding that, so to speak, and saying, all right, we accept that no matter what we do, we're idiots, so we're going to choose to act and be idiots as opposed to not act and be idiots. I think that's where we are, but I'll turn to my colleague, Commissioner Levesque, first for any questions or comments.
Well, thank you for everything you do. You know, homelessness is a subject that many people don't like to talk about, they like to ignore, that like it doesn't exist, but it does exist. But it's also multi-tiered in some regard. It starts with the inventory of housing, because that inventory of housing affects cost of housing in a dramatic way, and I can speak to that firsthand. But, but I just think by making more houses available, affordable housing, workforce housing, whatever, it's going to go a long way to help a lot of the problems. And on a personal note, we all remember Ted Williams, referred to as the voice. And you mentioned you have a group that'll actually go out and, and approach some of the homeless folks. Well, he was homeless. He, people that I'm very familiar with actually approached him and worked with him and brought him forward. And so it's pretty amazing what we can do. But again, I think that kind of approach can be very effective because a lot of them are, you know, affected by substance abuse or whatever they need or help. Thank you.
Commissioner Fitz. Yeah, thank you both for being here and for all the work that you and a lot of folks in your coalition are doing. I too will sign up to be an idiot who wants to take action. You know, it's a societal issue that we can't just sweep under the carpet, right? So we need to do something. A couple of questions for you. The housing market survey, when do you anticipate having those results? And I'd be very interested in that.
The work that we're doing, our inventory?
Yes.
Our committees are, they have that together.
Right, so you said you're doing a housing market survey?
The housing market study.
Sorry, yeah.
That's coming after the, the county's.
Yes.
Land use plan, right?
So.
That should be coming next.
Right after that?
Yeah.
Cool.
And then we're kind of in a study, housing market study, yeah. As opposed to a survey.
Now you've got to compute this. Are we doing a census of housing in Fairfield County? Is that what's happening? Or tell me more about the study that's, that helps.
I think that's the anticipation, is that it would be a census of the housing in Fairfield County at all levels, not just affordable housing.
Right, right. Organized.
Yeah.
Right, so in, that's going to take some time to complete, right?
Yes.
And do you have any idea if that's three months, six months, a year, two years? How long does it take to do something like that?
I don't. Planning next would be the consultant, and so they would guide us in that.
All right. And then if you could, in just a couple sentences, what, what does success look like to you guys?
First?
This is excellent. Having avenues and opportunities for folks that are experiencing homelessness that are unsheltered and understanding like what resources are available to them and helping them get to that, I think also just looking at the whole housing spectrum, not only just from homelessness, but from workforce housing, permanent supportive housing. I mean, yeah, we're going to do a study and there's going to be a lot of meaning in that, but I think we already know we need permanent supportive housing in the county, we need more family shelter in the county, we need just more general affordable housing. I think what the study will do is kind of give us that baseline that, like Linda was talking about, that we have an inventory, we know where the needs are, where the gaps are, that puts us in a position to be able to go to developers and funders and say, you know, here's, here's what we, this is analysis of where we are, this is what we need, and that'll be the, you know, the next step then to taking it forward.
Right, so success for, for us in Lancaster means having some data to back up a plan, that we can put together a plan to say, we have this, we have this housing, we need, you know, we have this need, here's the gap, so city, county, developers, whoever, we now have a plan to, to bring that, you know, to bring that forward.
So just to put in my words, making those who are homeless aware of the opportunities that are in front of them and understanding where we are today and having a plan to get somewhere else in the future.
And then getting there, not just having a plan, but yeah, getting there so that the, the services are available, the housing is available, and that people know that it's available for them. I want to address your comment about Habitat. Habitat for Humanity is the only entity that is currently creating affordable home ownership options. And so while we're, yes, we're, one to two units a year is great because that's what they do, we could really have them doing 50. And, and, you know, I mean, we don't have those affordable starter homes being built, and the Habitat model really works. And so, yeah, we're big fans of Habitat.
I know you are, and I, and I, I don't know that that should have come up, but it was a mild irritant, not towards anybody that's serving in particular, but I just, I guess it's kind of a cautionary note for folks who are involved in this process. I mean, don't let great become the enemy of good, your criticisms in that regard. You know, I guess the, from the commissioner's standpoint, certainly our access to ARP is dwindling, nearing exhaustion. And so, you know, our ability to, to dramatically move the needle in terms of expenditures on, on these types of things has certainly changed with that exhaustion. But I think our policy and political commitment remains in terms of wanting to be good partners. You know, I, I think for me anyway, as a resident of Lancaster, the fact that I might drive down Main Street someday and see Tent City pop up on the soccer fields seems unimaginable, right? Unless, of course, you watch the news occasionally, then it doesn't seem so impossible. And, and I think avoiding, you know, that kind of situation in our community is important to everybody. Getting the services and meeting the needs of these folks, therefore, is important to everybody. So I think that's how we see it.
I also want to address just something that you said, Commissioner Levesque, that I think we don't have to go very far for any of us to think of someone that we know who suffers from a mental illness or a substance use disorder, or who has been homeless, or who's at, who's at risk of homelessness. And so I think that when we think about that, of how tenuous it is for some people to stay housed, and how important it is for the services, it isn't them out there, it is my uncle, it is the person that you know, it is, you know, Ted Williams. And but for someone reaching out, but for the day that they decided that they were going to find, you know, seek help, they would have been lost. And so the second chances that so many people have been afforded because someone reached out are, are, right, you know, not, not very far from each one of us.
Just doing some quick math in my head, I mean, I think a lot of us, more conservative types, over the years might say, get a job. So let's do that, let's get a job, let's get a job at $20 an hour. So we're making $40,000 a year, and then your, your net is going to be $30,000 a year. So your monthly income is going to be $2,500 a month, and then 1,200 or $1,300 a month in rent. Oh, did you save enough money to buy a car? Probably not. Do you want a car? Well, I need to get back and forth to work, so now I'm going to spend through $400 a month on the car. And when you start doing the math of that, that person that's making 40 grand a year, it blows up. It doesn't work in the current market situation. So, you know, after we say what we say in our deeply red county, get a job. Okay. It's still pretty complicated after that, given the market situation. So not sure how we can influence that, but we'll, we'll try to be helpful in ways that we can.
That's the conversation, is having those housing, housing available at all of those levels, right? So housing for people who can't get a job, who need a deeply subsidized rent, which is not a lot of people, frankly, it's a very small percentage of the population. But then the majority of people who need affordable housing are exactly what you're talking about, the people who work at CBS and, you know, serving at a downtown restaurant or even, you know, working for the city, right? You know, these are good paying jobs, but they aren't high paying jobs, and you still, you know, need an affordable rent. And most of the, all of the new construction apartments that have been built in Lancaster are all at market rate. These are going for $1,500 for a two-bedroom, $2,100 for a three-bedroom. Those aren't people living in Lancaster, those are people coming outside of Lancaster. So what are, so that's where this plan and, and the implementation of that plan is really looking for those people, the people who live here, who are working here, and what are the, what are the wages here, and are the rents and affordable here? And can someone pay rent here and still save for a house? And then can they buy a house? Because the price, the housing prices have gone up. For anyone in Lancaster looking for a house, they're saying, oh my gosh, I can't believe that house is $100,000, it was just $70,000. And now there's, but, or 100, it's gone up to $120,000. Someone from outside of Lancaster is saying, that house is only $120,000? And they're buying them. So this is the conversation, and this is, this is the need. So we're, we're wanting to look at all of it, look at the funding that we have available, what can we do now with the funds that we have available or the resources that we can, but then also, like you said, for policy, just going forward, having that plan for the future, putting it in place as much as we can, and then continuing those policies so that we have, we have policies in place that don't create barriers, but that encourage housing for, affordable housing at all levels.
Well, we are very encouraged by the additional interest in your coalition and the way things are going there, and we appreciate your update. I know you're in communication, at least occasionally, with staff at the commissioner's office, and we would hope that would continue and that we could be as cooperative and helpful as possible. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, and I, these are updates on our, on our committees from June, but I wanted to just pass these out. to just pass these out to, uh, give you some.
Thank you very much. It's time the commission sets aside an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the commission. If you would like to do so, please begin by stating your name, residential address. Uh, we do have a three minute, uh, time limit, which we would appreciate your courtesy on. And we would also continue to ask that you address your comments to the commission as opposed to other members of the audience. Under those terms and conditions, is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good morning. Uh, it's good to be here this morning. And, uh, it's always good when you get up at my age and things work out. But I have a couple of things I'd like to share this morning. Number one, it was said by somebody that was really intelligent in lots of various things. He said, freedom is never more than one generation away from extension. Extinction, I should say. We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed over to them to do the same. So we have to teach our children the power of freedom. And no one knows it like those that have lived under other types of government. A shocking thing happened here that we picked up. Uh, Patriot Laura Kreisner confronted the Ohio Attorney General with a white fibrous blood clot in a jar. She asked how many young people have to die and get injured before we, he would investigate. The Ohio Attorney General, David Anthony Yost responded by saying that he did not have the authority to investigate and that his mom told him that two wrongs do not make it right. Seriously, what is his job? As a Ohio Attorney General, wherever there is a death like that, it seems to me he has that right to find out what the problem is. But we should call the Attorney General and find out what is, he feels that he should do. And encourage him to step forward and find out what some of these difficulties are. It reminds me of, uh, anyone that's in, uh, positions of leadership in the county. They need to take the serious problems and I think they do and try to problem, but nothing that people come forward and ask questions about is beneath their pay grade. Problems for politicians are to be solved. And, uh, sometimes problems, instead of getting solved, they become subsidized. And so we need to be aware that when something is no longer working, it needs to be stopped. This doesn't very often happen in politics, but it's difficult to do. We realize that. And I would like to, right this time, pray for the leadership in this county. Lord, we come before you this day asking that you touch the lives of all these people that are in leadership in the county and that they look to you for the guidance and direction that they need, knowing that you are in charge and you make the final decision. And Lord, we need to have that guidance and knowledge given to us. We need it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Judy, Judy Steeman, same address as his. Anyway, um, the day when I wakened up and, um, and I looked at the, uh, little flip thing that I have for a calendar about prayer and it says, uh, prayer is like a vessel shot from, it can be shot from any unnoticed, um, from any place in the world. It travels unnoticed at, at the speed of thought and it hits its target every time. That's the power of prayer. You know, there's still more coming out that's not good about COVID. The first one is the federal court rules against FDA over the anti-ivermectin post during COVID. And government overstepped its authority by giving medical advice during the pandemic. They were recommending that Americans receive the experimental and effective COVID mRNA vaccine, but not to give, uh, the other. Uh, the FDA has the authority under federal food, drug and cosmetic acts to convey information and data, but not to give medical recommendations. During oral arguments in the case, the FDA also admitted that doctors have the right to prescribe ivermectin to, uh, the patients. It's nice that they did this after all the damage they've done. Ivermectin reduces excess deaths by 74%. This is a new study that shows that. Next, CDC faked 99% of reported COVID deaths, data shows. Yeah, it has just quietly published new data that reveals a staggering 99% of the reported COVID deaths were not actually caused by the virus. Next study, VAIDS triggered in children following Pfizer COVID JAP. The children aged five through 11 tested after Pfizer JAP developed the VAIDS vaccine-acquired immune deficiency, which is VAIDS, leaving them susceptible to viruses, bacteria, and many other things. Finally, um, the vaccination against COVID causes a marked decrease in immunity to all these other viruses, bacteria and fungi. This decreased immunity to other pathogens is what people refer to as VAIDS. Last, Defense Department is going to crack down on disinformation on social media with the help of AI. The true purpose of the government censorship initiatives is not to fight blind disinformation, but to silence conservative viewpoints such as it did with COVID, the 2020 election, Ukraine war, the Hunter Biden laptop and more. The very, very last one, Fauci pushes masks while admitting there's no evidence they work. Thank you very much.
Sherry Pymore, 3464 South Bank Road, Ellersport, actually the township, Walnut Township. Can I have just a teeny bit of extra? I've got two things that because of the homeless situation that I'd like to comment on. Is that okay without losing my extra time for my solar? Prior to us moving full time to Walnut Township, uh, we lived in Gehanna. And we had a homeless man that lived on the corner of Hamilton Road and Rocky Fork South. The police tried to take him to a shelter. He didn't want to go. He wanted to live on the street. There are people like that. Now, the beginning of the whole homeless thing, for the most part, began when they closed the mental hospitals years ago. And that basically put them on the street. And then the drug addiction. I have, uh, my oldest grandson is, he's struggled with addiction for 14, oh, actually 16 years now. And so he's in and out of rehab and all of that. He's not homeless. He serfs couches. So technically I guess he is, but he's not. Um, so I, I think by building homes is fine. Maybe have a tiny home community where people start out in tiny homes that they can afford and then move up, try to get them jobs. Okay. Because there are a lot of homeless people that are very intelligent and very smart. It's just that they're choosing sometimes to live on the streets. My husband's cousin used to volunteer in Columbus, helping the homeless, feeding the homeless, talking to them, trying to get them to realize that, hey, you can, you can get out there and you can get a job and we can help you do this. We can help you do that. And some of them were very, you know, um, positive about that and appreciated the help. And some of them just flat wanted to live under a bridge or on the streets. So you, you, and like, um, Commissioner Davis said, you, you think it's not going to be here, but once it starts, if we don't have rules that they have to follow and places, instead of just living on the streets, your property values will go down. The, the people in the community will not be happy with the, the trash and the crime and that type of thing. So, um, they can be helped, but they need a place. They need to bring back the mental institutions for the people that need that kind of help. And then the other type of help with, it starts with a family actually. And, and then, so if we can encourage that type of thing, um, you know, there are so many fatherless homes, we need to encourage families. And, and I know the health department and various departments can, can help out with those things too, but we as a county need to really work on that type of thing too before it does hit the county hard. Okay. Okay. All right. Now, um, okay, now I'm switching subjects. Oh, oh, by the way, um, years ago, we had some duplexes and some of our best tenants were Section 8 because they were working very hard to increase, um, their income and that type of thing. They were very hard workers and they were actually some of our, um, best paying tenants. Just to let you know that. Okay, now I'm on to the other subject, solar. Um, the comprehensive plan, and I know there'll be a lot of discussions tonight. Um, um, there are some things in there that the plan does mention of solar. It's page five, 1.7. Um, and these will all be discussed, so I'm not going to go through all of these, but, uh, page 21, 51, uh, 51B, future land use, uh, talks about solar, uh, in the beginning stages. And then there's, uh, page 23, 5.2.1E, talking about the constrained land limits, uh, development. Um, that is extremely true. And I think in our plan, I know, uh, Commissioner Fix doesn't really want to address solar like in the plan, but due to the lack of process, uh, the lack of process transparency, the solar inefficiency and land use unpredictability, this plan does not advocate for solar projects. And I, I, I mean, I, that should be added if you're going to leave those other items in there, including the 5.2.5, uh, talking about the number of acres and that type of thing, which will be increasing, not decreasing. Um, and that will not be a, a final number. Okay. Um, anyway, as the, uh, projects, as it becomes impossible to predict or plan for necessary development. So we really need to take that into account with the development. And just FYI, I didn't know this until I had an energy specialist tell me this. He said, did you know that NASA can see by satellite, they can tell that in the summertime in Ohio, around where we grow crops, they see an increase in oxygen. So we won't see that increase in oxygen because of the crops and the plants in the summertime in, in the productive areas of Ohio. Thank you.
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing all right. I'm, uh, I'm a little tired from the long weekend, but I appreciate you asking. Anything on legal?
Uh, nothing today, Commissioner.
Thank you. Administration update.
All right, we can review American Rescue Plan update from the 30.6 received, 28.6 has been appropriated, 15.3 expended and 4.4 incumbent obligated. And we have been made aware that there were a couple of approved projects that are, um, exceeding their original estimates. So Bart and Jeff are working with those folks, uh, to have a better understanding of what that means. Uh, Adam H. Community Needs Assessment Survey, they are conducting this, uh, to, um, determine mental health and substance use treatment needs and the county will help identify gaps in services and will determine future funding priorities. And in the, uh, review packet is a QR code where you can access that survey. The state operating budget, uh, CCIO is holding regional meetings to discuss the policy issues and funding included in the state budget. And, uh, there are a number of regional meetings. I will be attending the one that is located at Cambridge. Highlights of resolutions, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals and there are 14 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting today. One resolution in particular is certifying the drainage maintenance districts to the auditor for assessment. And just want to take a moment and thank Bart immensely, uh, for his work on this. It was, um, um, an, an adventure, um, to learn this process and get things accomplished. Thanks also to Jeremiah and his team for getting that information and ultimately for the auditor for adding that on to the, the tax bill there. But I think it was a learning process for all involved, but appreciate the time, effort and energy you put into that.
Bart was a tremendous help. Thank you, Lord.
Uh, let's see here, we also have a resolution authorizing a partial assignment and assumption agreement between Fairfield County, uh, DHL, Canal Winchester, uh, for providing benefits in terms of the CRA agreement. Rick, anything? I see Stephanie here as well.
Just a bonus for sponsorship, uh, but because we have all of these agreements with them, um, that needs to be done within the day. So nothing, nothing to be crammed up. This is all right.
Thank you. Then we have a couple from the engineer's office approving contract bid awards to complete general construction for the Refugee Road Intersection Safety Improvement Project and also one, uh, to approve LPA Federal Project Agreement with ODOT for the Refugee Road Shared Use Path. And then lastly, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two work trucks, uh, for the Utilities Department via the state bid contract. Budget review, Bart?
Just for a moment, we could stay on resolutions. Rick, do you want to add anything on the DHL resolution and what's going on?
Yeah, they're just, uh, transferring like the official name of the owner of the building. The DHL will still be operating out there. It's to be operating by, so if you drive a class there, you'll see a lot of, a lot of trucks, a lot, a lot of, so this point ahead of schedule, a lot of good work from a lot of people around this room.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Bart.
No additional updates this week.
Well, then it was, it's okay now.
All right, moving on to calendar review and invitations received. Rochelle, please.
Under calendar review, we have the Regional Planning Commission meeting tonight at 5:30 at the Record Center. The following invitations were received. A ribbon cutting for the Anchored in Glass exhibit at the Ohio Glass Museum at 124 West Main Street on September 14th at 4:30 PM. Fisher Catholic Athletic Association will be holding a dueling piano fundraiser on September on September sixteenth at six PM in the Fisher Catholic Alumni Hall at eighteen oh three Granville Pike. And Fairfield Medical Center will host a food and wine tasting and charity auction on September twenty-eighth from five-thirty to eight-thirty PM at the Eagles Event Center located in nineteen thirty-sixth Main Street. The following correspondence was received by the Commissioner's Office. A press release from the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities dated August twenty-eighth entitled Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities Accredited as Heart Safe Business. A release from Visit Fairfield County dated August thirty-first entitled Iconic Venue Meets Natural Skincare in the Hocking Hills Corridor. An article written by Jeff Baron in the Lancaster Eagle Gazette dated August thirty-first entitled County Commission Discusses Taking Over the Transit System From the City. A memo from County Auditor Dr. Carrie Brown dated August thirtieth with the following subjects: Government Fund Balances, Assess Valuation, and Total New Construction, Public Records Requests and Social Media Followers Update, and Save the Dates. Also from the County Auditor, the wins of the week. A survey from the Fairfield County Atom H Board titled Mental Health and Substance Use Treatment Needs in Fairfield County. August thirtieth minutes and mid-year DAC update from the Fairfield County Health Department District Advisory Committee, and the County Auditor's September Newsletter, Auditor's Ledger, news from the County Auditor's Office. And that concludes correspondence received.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all we have, Commissioner.
All right. Under old business, I don't have any Commissioner Fix under old business.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lovesey under old business.
Thank you.
Um, under new business, um, I just, let's touch on the September calendar for a minute. Whenever we have these discussions about mission scheduling, I'm often reminded of two thousand and eighteen. That was a year when Commissioner Tiger was ill. And Commissioner Lovesey and I were, in, in some regards, the only two commissioners who could come to meetings. In order to have a meeting, you have to have at least two commissioners. And for that year, we just had two and, and we managed. But it was certainly difficult at times.
I have a travel schedule that's somewhat aggressive in the month of September. Most of that, uh, those obligations have been scheduled around our, our need to meet, with the exception of, I think, the twenty-sixth, which I will not be able to make our meeting on the twenty-sixth. I understand from my colleagues that you are both eligible and available to make that meeting on the twenty-sixth still work. Is that right?
Yes.
And is there any other scheduling issue? Let's just deal with September where we need to concern ourselves with at the forum.
Yeah, next Tuesday, September twelfth, I'll be out of the state.
I am going to be back in the state by September twelfth. So I, I will be eligible for that meeting.
And Tuesday the nineteenth, I'll be out of the state as well.
Twelve and the nineteenth.
Yes.
All right. Got it. Any, any concerns on those issues, Commissioner Lovesey?
I'd never go anywhere.
I know. I'm always here.
You're the guy, man. You are the guy.
Under, staying under, I don't know if it's new or old business or whatever, but I had some additional meetings this morning with staff dealing with the projection of electricity costs. I mentioned this last week, that being around, I think I said last week, one point one. That estimate for two thousand and twenty-four has been adjusted to one point three in the general fund. If you look at countywide operations, the number would certainly be more significant than that. But I don't have a number on the cost of electricity in two thousand and twenty-four outside the general fund, for example, utilities and other entities that would also have electric costs. But I just wanted to make my colleagues aware that that investigation or review of those costs continues. Certainly in the problem identification stage, not necessarily culminating yet in any conceptual solution to the expected exponential growth in those costs. Do you think additional? You guys want to go up or stay down?
It's your call.
Stay down. Start our meeting. Please rise if you are able. Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry. I forgot an important section of our meeting. I make mistakes. I admit it. You know, it's good to get up for a second. We are pleased to have with us today our clerk of courts, Brandon Meyer. And I wanted to give you an opportunity to share any updates or information that you deem appropriate to me. Jeremiah.
Busy out there. We are not building a connector road at this time. We don't have.
I hear, I, I hear your story.
We're just trying to keep up.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Lisa, how are you doing?
Very well.
Good. Anything you'd like to share?
No, thank you.
Dr. Brown.
Hi. I attended the Senate Select Committee on Housing meeting on August thirty-first virtually and commented on a couple of supply-side efforts that are being moving forward. That is, there are land bank grants that are going to be available for housing. There's encouragement in our data to think about ways that we can identify anything that can be rehabbed. So that's relevant to some of the conversations that were had today. In addition, I think that there were a number of different lenses to look at the data. And one interesting one was by industry in a regional basis. So from the manufacturing standpoint, this is the need and to look at it in that way. And I actually found a study that did that in Minnesota. And it was very helpful in yielding certain action steps for the community. So I just mentioned that now because there's an example of that. Then this week is Payroll Appreciation Week. So just wanted to honor all of those that in the private and the public sector work on payroll. I brought the map of the month, which is with Baltimore, a little recognized growth area, but a major growth area in the county. And it was a map that came as a result of several different requests, G I S. And then I just, I'm happy to highlight to some of the data that's being presented, memos. One that we're very happy about is that we are increasing the number of people that are on Homestead and increasing those that have the owner occupancy credit that didn't know that they were eligible for such credits. Probably around a hundred this year, which is a pretty big increase about things that you think people know about. It has slipped away in some circles.
Thank you. To all of our elected officials who are with us today, please know that the commission does very much appreciate your willingness to be with us today. And please accept my sincere apologies for almost forgetting to give you an opportunity to share with us. So if you would, please rise if you're able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the religion which sustains, one nation under God, and with your feet and justice for all.
Thank you. Listen, keep our voice up since we're not mic'd. Honny just whispered to me that the mics for this table are on order. So we'll look forward to that in the future. Rochelle, any announcements?
There are none.
Move on to the approval minutes for August twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three.
Summit, second.
Discussion. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes past three zero. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nine dot five dot A. Resolution authorizing certifying drainage maintenance districts to the Fairfield County Auditor's Office.
Commissioner, I move items A and B.
I'll second. Discussion.
So I have a question about the Drainage Maintenance District. Well, actually, so how many Drainage Maintenance Districts do we have in Fairfield County?
I have a bunch.
And each one of those is assessed by parcel, correct?
Yes.
And so there's thousands of parcels. And so somebody had to do all the math to figure out in each one of those drainage districts, every parcel, what their portion was going to be.
Yeah, that happens in the, uh, in the process with the, the plan approval and working with RPC.
And somehow Bart kind of figured out all the math that went into that to be able to do the assessments that the auditor is going to do.
Yeah, it was, um, it was a little bit from some prior work that was done. Bart did a really good job of getting in there and understanding what was done, what we actually agreed to do when we set it up and making sure that we're in line with that and we've got something we can understand now.
So knowing Bart as I do, he will very humbly say he was just doing his job. But I think there are times when people have the opportunity to step up and, and get something done quickly and effectively. And this obviously is an example of that. So Bart, I just want to say thank you.
I'll second that. Bart, uh, real quick, if, if you only knew the history behind all that and how difficult it was, you'd know how much I absolutely appreciate it. Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nine dot five dot C. A resolution authorizing the execution of a partial assignment and assumption agreement between Fairfield County Excel Incorporated, Massachusetts Corporation, DBA, DHL Supply Chain, and RES Canal Winchester LLC and Ohio Limited Liability Company.
Summit, second. Discussion.
Rick, did you want to talk about this a third time?
Oh. I see now. I get distracted. It's a big day. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nine dot five dot D. A resolution to authorize the establishment of a new fund for Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency.
Summit, second. Discussion.
Sorry, a grant we announced a couple of weeks ago. Be training.
Welcome back.
It's good to see you back. It's happy to be here.
It's been a while.
It's been like, I, I didn't work like in a building for.
Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Engineer. Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nine dot five dot E. A resolution to approve the contract bid award for the FAI CR seven one point nine four Refugee Road Intersection Safety Improvement.
Fairfield County Engineer, move items E, F, G, H, I, N, J.
Second. Discussion.
Uh, that's a great project. We've received a considerable amount of funding from the state to move forward with those four intersections. And it's the, kind of the second phase in a, in a long-range plan to to better those facilities on Refugee Road for public and especially the schools and whatnot. Continue working on that to find some kind of structure in the future. And the, uh, the shared use path, that's a separate job, but also in the same area. We received some funding from the state for that shortly after we got everything prepared for the intersection. So we're doing them in two different parts, but it's all coming to the same goal trying to do for that entire corridor. That makes sense.
So I was interested, as Commissioner Davis was in the Coon Path project. That's how interested I am in the Refugee Road project. I travel that road every day and I know how desperately those improvements are needed. I'm excited that the TID and, and the Engineers Office have made that progress. Thank you.
I don't travel as frequently as Commissioner Fix, but I travel frequently and needs it.
Even more.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nine dot five dot K. A resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriated from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund Number two thousand and seventy-two Children's Services Fund.
Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items K and L.
Second. Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero from Fairfield County Utilities. Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nine dot five dot M. A resolution authorizing the purchase of two work trucks.
Summit, second. Discussion.
So just not on topic, but my understanding is that Tony Vogel is a big Clemson Tiger fan. Is that right?
Uh, no.
Not anymore.
Used to be.
Gotcha. Nothing further.
No, I don't. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nine dot five dot N. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment invoices for departments that need board of commissioner approval.
Summit, second. Discussion. Please start a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for September twelfth at nine AM.
Is there any other issue, item that anybody would like to bring to attention to the commission at this time? Eric Downhaw accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
All second. I got a motion to adjourn in a second. Although, everybody seemed to be saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. The motion carries. The commission is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. I hope you have a, a good afternoon.